Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kozakic?
Here.
Mayor Rothschild?
Here.
Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Reverend Dr. Max Sigmund from Trinity Presbyterian Church. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Invite you to pray in any tradition that you're comfortable. And if you don't wish to pray, just think good thoughts because they're important as well. Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of minds and hearts, grant wisdom to those who are gathered here that they may discern truth through the gifts of leadership and grant them compassion that they may enact justice through their gifts of service. And in doing both, through service and leadership, bind the wounds and heal the hurts of this community. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the greatest justice for all. Okay, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is going to be to proclaim June 18th today to be National Heat Awareness Day. Probably a good day for that. Barbara Warren, if you would like to come up from the Positions for Social Responsibility to accept this proclamation? I'll go ahead and read it, and then we'll let Barbara say a few words. If other folks would like to come up, we've got a bunch of, save some call to the audience time, but that's your call. The whole crew. Whereas every year, the last Friday in May is designated as National Heat Awareness Day. And whereas global climate heating is bringing more extreme heat conditions to the United States, and while our communities and governments must work rapidly and effectively to address and reverse this global climate crisis, we must also take action to protect our populations from the current health and safety risks of extreme heat events. Whereas heat is the leading weather-related killer in the United States, and Tucson summers can be extremely hot with vulnerable populations, including outdoor and indoor workers, children, elders, pregnant women, individuals with pre-existing conditions, and low-income communities without access to climate-controlled environments at increased risk of heat-related illness or death. And whereas local government and community preparedness can minimize the hazards of extreme heat events by educating the public to recognize the signs of heat-related illness and to follow prevention measures, including rest and access to water and shade or a climate-controlled environment, issuing heat advisories and public service announcements, providing public cooling centers, and checking in on vulnerable neighbors in advance of and during extreme heat events. Whereas local and state emergency management officials, the Arizona Division of Occupational Safety and Health, the National Weather Service, and other agencies can support the city residents, workers, and tourists in reducing the effects of extreme heat events by focusing attention on the upcoming summer season. And Tucson's volunteer-led Building Resilient Neighborhoods program is available to help local residents plan and be prepared for hurt heat emergencies. And whereas, by being prepared and taking proper precautions, the people of Tucson can mitigate the effects of extreme heat events and take concrete steps towards climate change adaptation and community resilience. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2019, today, to be National Heat Awareness Day in this community and encourage all residents to take proper precautions and check on their vulnerable neighbors during extreme heat events. Where I put my hand and seal this 18th day of June, 2019. Thank you all for doing this. Thank you for getting out to our neighbors and making them aware. And Barbara, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
In support of the proclamation of heat awareness, I bring you a message from the National Office of my organization, Positions for Social Responsibility. From the publication Heat, Fire, and Water: How Climate Change Has Created a Public Health Emergency, it can be found on a website that I could provide if you're interested. The earth is hotter now than any time since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. Records are broken every year. There is no clear end to the warming that is underway. Adaptation is a needed and is a proven lifesaver. Heat illnesses were the leading cause of weather-related deaths between 1988 and 2017. The 1995 Chicago heat wave killed around 740,000. 70,000 died in the 2003 European heat wave. More numerous and more severe heat waves are inevitable. By 2100, there will be between two and three times as many days when temperatures are over 95 degrees Fahrenheit. Parts of the earth will become uninhabitable. Heat-related yields of corn and other crops may fall 80% by 2100. Rocketing prices, famine, food riots, civil unrest, and large refugee populations are likely. Things will be worse in El Nino years. Prevention is the only solution. We must mitigate climate change by curtailing greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to change by strengthening the public health infrastructure. This requires political leadership from the top down at federal, state, and local levels and bottom-up activism that demands change. Surveys indicate that this is what the public wants. But so far, knowledge has not been an adequate stimulus to act. This must change. There are no alternative facts. Climate change affects the health of all Americans right now. There are no exceptions. Although needed adaptation will reduce risks for all, only prompt, significant reduction in greenhouse gas emissions will stave off a crescendoing public health emergency. Children, the elderly, and those with pre-existing conditions who are socially the most vulnerable will be the most susceptible to the ravages of climate change. Thank you, and please get to work, take action. City Council as well, thank you very much.
And I'd like to call down Councilmember Romero. She's on cue. And call up Mexican consulate Ricardo Pineda. And I'm going to let the two of you take it from here. Apparently, there was some very special event, and you have certificates of appreciation.
Yes.
There you go.
I just wanted to, first and foremost, recognize Mexican consulate Ricardo Pineda for their 11 years of partnership with the Ward One Council Office on creating a bilingual literacy fair. And it's called Feria de la Lectura. This year, we celebrated our 11th year as being a continual annual program that we provide for the community. It's been a wonderful partnership. I've been in office for 12 years. And the first year that I was in office, the Mexican consulate's office approached our office and offered the idea of creating a bilingual literacy fair because it is so important to read to our children and to have children read, grow up reading, whether it is in English or any other language. Reading to our children from a very young age really affects their learning patterns. And so, we celebrated the 11th year. And it might be the last Feria de la Lectura that I get to organize as a council member representing Ward One. And so, I wanted to make this particular ceremony a very special one. We have amazing sponsors of the Feria de la Lectura. But the first anchoring sponsor of this feria was the Mexican consulate's office. And Mr. Ricardo Pineda has been a key advocate of this event. And I would like to pass the mic so that you could add anything, Mr. Pineda.
I'm more than happy, Councilmember Regina Romero. I just want to express my gratitude. You don't know how deep we feel about this multinational education literacy program. It was really important having the fact that we have a big number of our community living in the city of Tucson. So, if I remember well, we have given more than 20,000 books together in these 11 years, 12 years almost. So, we're going to continue with this specific program. And we are ready to continue partnering with every representative from the city trying to work in this specific matter. Education, literacy is key for our community for continuing growing and continue being a big and good contributor to this society. I thank you very much for the opportunity. It has been 11 years, wonderful years. To me, I've been in office just for six years, representing Mexico. And hopefully, we are going to continue, I'm sure about that, with this specific effort benefiting our community in the city of Tucson. Thank you very much, Councilmember Romero. We are ready to.
Ready to give. Ready to give recognition. I would first like to thank the cosponsors of this event. Without their financial support to this event, we would not be able to have a feria. We would not be able to have donated this year alone more than 350 backpacks, more than 400 books from authors that we actually flew in from Los Angeles. And they're bilingual authors, Ariana Stein and Patty Rodriguez from Los Angeles with their publishing company, Little Libros. We also gave more than 5,000 other books that many volunteers in the community purchased from their own pocket and made available to the community. So, it was not just books for kids, but also books for their parents and for teenagers. And so, the contributing sponsors of this event were Tucson Electric Power, that's represented here by Larry Lucero; Southwest Gas, that's represented here by Walter Richter. And don't worry, guys, we're going to make you come over here and get a certificate. The City of Tucson Police Department, Arizona Complete Health, Chicanos por la Causa, Century Link, and the Tucson Firefighters Association. They were the contributing sponsors. And other major sponsors to the event was, of course, Tucson, City of Tucson Parks and Recreation, that have been lending us the space year after year for 11 years. Also, we have La Poderosa radio station. We have Univision in Unimaz, Arizona. And we have a representative here, Naomi Proaño. Hola Tucson Magazine, and of course, Tucson Medical Center Healthcare. Without these sponsors, the event wouldn't happen. And we are very, very proud to recognize them here today. I'd specifically like to also thank the staff at the Ward One Council Office. Our major organizer is Alvida Gallego, who's here today. She deserves a big round of applause because she's the one that herds cats. And also, the many volunteers that will be recognized here today for volunteering their time on a Saturday morning and helping the community, not just with the books and everything, the backpacks and everything that we do contribute, but also the people that table there. Informational tables that give information to the community, not just on literacy, but also on services that these community partners provide the residents. So, with that, I'd like to start calling people up. And if you can stay up here, we will really appreciate it. Jeff Mira Sola, if you can come up here. Yes, thank you so much. Cynthia Garcia, and accepting on her behalf, Larry Lucero. We also want to thank Adriana Martinez. Thank you so, Marines. Adriana Marines. Lieutenant Colin King, I believe, is coming to accept on behalf of Chief Magnus with TPD. Josh Campbell with Tucson Firefighters Association. Francisca Cruz. Cristian Erunes. Alma Gallardo with Arizona Bilingual. Hannah Eras. Our youngest volunteer, ladies and gentlemen, Martha Hang. Vanessa Larios. Michelle Lizarga. Geraldine Martinez. Muchas gracias. Dulce Maria Montano. Terry Nerzwick, he's not here, okay. Terry is the director of El Pueblo Neighborhood Center. Esperanza Nat. Muchas gracias. Galilea Alvera. Raymond Parkman. There you are. Thank you so much, Raymond. Naomi Proaño with Univision Arizona. Walter Richter with Southwest Gas. Maharva Ramirez with Pima County Chairman Richard Elias. Miriam Rojos, Rojas. Alfonso Romero with El Pueblo Neighborhood Center. Valerie Sanchez with Chicanos por la Causa. I don't think Valerie's here. Sonia Tabanico with La Poderosa 105.3. And Bianca Villarreal. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, I think these are the people that are present. Oh, thank you. If we can have a big round of applause for everyone here that contributed to this event. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And there was many more, but there were some people that couldn't make it today. But muchas felicidades. Thank you so much for everything that you've contributed to make this event a reality. Muchisimas gracias a señor consul. Thank you so much, and I hope this partnership continues. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you. Oh, una foto. Todos, todos, todos. Todos, 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 déjase. Closer, closer, closer. Everybody, everybody. I'm sorry. Everybody get closer. Get closer, get closer. Swishing. Okay, I'm going to have to pick a couple of them because I can't hit everybody. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. One second, sweetheart.
All right, let's move on to item 2D.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 215, date June 18th, is received and made part of the record. May have a motion to approve the appointments in the report.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to approve the appointments of Joy Howe, Mike Peel, and Ryan Clark to the Commission on Food Security, Heritage, and Economy. Are Ms. Howe, Mr. Peel, or Mr. Clark present tonight? All right, well, everyone should know these individuals do this volunteer and without pay and really assist us in our work. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three.
Mayor and council reports, summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 197, date June 18th, is received and made part of the record. This time, it's been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Romero.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. I'd like to invite you all, my colleagues on the council and the community. This coming Monday is June 24th. And what that means is that we are going to be celebrating El Dia de San Juan. I'm very excited to share Dia de San Juan is happening this Monday. This is a cultural West Side celebration that honors St. John the Baptist. But it's become a community event centered on water and how important water is to our desert. Water is life. And this celebration has been happening for many, many years in our community. This is a special year as we are going to be launching water back into the Santa Cruz River in accordance with a celebration of water in the desert. It will start at Barrio Santa Cruz at 5:00 p.m., then go on through Barrio Sin Hombre, and end with a fiesta at the Mercado San Agustín Annex with live music, local vendors, and performances from different dance groups at 6:00 p.m. I'm inviting the entire Tucson public to join us as we continue to celebrate this historic tradition of the call for monsoons that bring life to the desert. Dia de San Juan is going to be celebrated on Monday, June 24th, as the traditional way. We're going to start with putting back water into the Santa Cruz River at 5:00, and then the festivities start at 6:00 p.m., and then go on to 10:00 p.m. The Mercado San Agustín Annex is located at 267 South Avenida del Comiento. And if you have any questions or would like to participate, please call the Ward One Council Office at 791-4040. Hope to see you at Dia de San Juan.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out as we dedicated the splash pad at Palaberty Park this week. It was a really neat event. It was pretty exciting because there was about 50 kids under five running around in the water, which was awesome. We also refurbished the pool and refinished the parking lot at that park. This is the second park in Ward Two in the last year that has had a complete makeover. This is thanks to our Parks Department, the outstanding leadership of its director, Brent Dennis. And what you're seeing in Tucson is return on the investment for all of us. It was really exciting to see. And the best is still yet to come. You're going to see shaded basketball courts. You're going to see sand volleyball courts. You're going to see the amenities that the parks of Tucson have and that the citizens of Tucson deserve. So, thank you.
Councilor Durham.
As all of you know, property crime is a persistent issue in Tucson, especially during the summer when people are moving in and out of their homes or on summer vacations. Next Thursday, June 27th, I will join TPD Chief Magnus and in hosting a Harden the Target Forum. We'll have Chief Magnus, TPD officers, and representatives from alarm and security companies on hand to discuss ways you can proactively prevent yourself from becoming a victim. It'll be at TPD Operations Division West at 1310 West Miracle Mile from 6:00 to 7:30. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember Fembres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the Juneteenth Organizing Committee for giving me the opportunity to speak at opening ceremony for the 49th Annual Tucson Juneteenth Celebration held this last Saturday on June 15th. I want to congratulate the committee for their work on Juneteenth and the many organizations and businesses here at Juneteenth who participated. I want to thank Councilwoman Romero, who joined me at the opening ceremony, and Mayor Rautchow, who read the City of Tucson proclamation. I want to thank everyone who attended the South 12th Avenue Improvements Project Open House held Thursday, June 12th, at the El Pueblo Senior Center. A lot of good questions, comments, and suggestions were made for this project. Councilwoman Romero joined me in co-hosting this event. I want to thank Deanna Aragon, T.Direktor and T. staff for their work on this project. For more information, you can call 327-6777, or go online to 12thAvenueTucson.com. On Saturday, June 8th, I had the privilege of speaking at the 33rd Annual Racial Reconciliation Conference held at the Sheraton Hotel. Martha Wills, Bill Wills, and Sunshine Ministries have put this conference on for the past 33 years. I presented Ward 5 medallions and hope to the honorees of this year's banquet, which included Ward 5's Joshua Austin, who was selected as Youth of the Year. Thursday, June 6th, was the Southern Arizona Dinner for Chicanos por la Causa, who is celebrating his 50 years of work and success. I wanted to congratulate Carlota Flores and Son Corridor, who are honored for their work. I wanted to congratulate CPLC for their work, and I had the privilege of working with Tali of ESU, Terry Cruz, Pete Garcia, and Lorraine Lee for many years, and it is great to see CPLC going on for another next 50 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's move on to item 4.
City managers' report, summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 198, date June 18th, is received and made part of the record. This time it's been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, no city events to report on, but I did want to take the privilege of the microphone and let you know that Allison, my daughter, had a granddaughter last week, and so we've welcomed, cut the lean-out rose to our family, and we're very excited, and Mom and baby are doing great, that's all.
Congratulations.
Mr. Manager, could you mention the award that the Budget Committee, your Finance Director Committee got?
Joyce, did you win something last week?
The GFOA, the GFOA, you want to mention that? I'm in the GFOA.
Yeah, it's the 30 seconds.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Fembres. I just would like to thank the budget staff, along with the rest of the city organization, for a job well done. We received the Excellence Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the Budget for Fiscal Year 19.
All right, item 5.
Liquor license applications, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 199, date June 18th, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Yeah, and on this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have three requests for new license, one request for person transfer, two requests for location transfer. Under item 5C, we have one request for special event. Under item 5D, we have one request for agent change, acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be for items 5B 1 through 6, C 1, and D 1 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Let's move to item 6.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask the matter placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. So we've got a number of cards here tonight, probably more than we have time for. We've got about seven or eight or nine miscellaneous. We've got a couple on toxin-free. We've got a whole series on I-11. I may see how much time we have for that. And then we've got a couple on the heat planning, which you guys have spoken on. So I'm gonna take sort of the miscellaneous first, see how much time we have for the rest. Let's start with Jason Hurake.
They've all made their own fucking comments.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jason Hurake. I'm from the Barrio Santa Cruz Neighborhood Association. And, well, first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking you and welcoming you all for Dia de San Juan festival and celebration, and thank you for bringing water back to the Santa Cruz. Our neighborhood is named after the river because it's had a great influence on our history and on the lives of our residents, and we're really looking forward to the celebration on Monday. I'd also like to speak today. I personally was not able to come to the study session, although Barrio Santa Cruz is part of the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition, which, you know, represents the neighborhoods as far as displacement and proper development within our neighborhoods. I know that this is an issue that is kind of new in the city, and it's one that brings up a lot of emotions, and there's a lot of history that goes along with this. We are a new organization, and I'm new to this whole system, but I'd like to give our perspective of what's going on. And we've dealt both with the city, the staff of the city, the workers, Councilor Ometo, the city manager's office, planning and development. And we've also gotten to know the leaders of our community, whether they're neighborhood associations or different organizations within different governments. And I would just like to say from our perspective, we see great passion, great compassion from both our neighborhood leaders and both from our city staff and representatives that we've elected. I would just like to say, despite any feelings of disconnect or any animosity that's come from the past and the history, maybe some injustices that have happened under other administrations, I'd like to say I have great hope and I have great belief, and I have that hope and belief because of the people that I've worked with over the last year, whether they are within the government or they come from the neighborhoods, whether it's Brian Flag from Casa Maria or Councilor Ometo from Ward 1 office. I know that many people care about the neighborhood. And once we make that effort to come together and come to the table and speak with each other and listen to each other, I feel that we can make great progress in the future. And I'm excited for a progressive growing Tucson. I'm excited for the development that's coming, but I also place great value in our history and in our foundation and the people that helped found this city and helped make the city what it is. Incentives may bring businesses into the city, and they may bring revenue and money, but what really brings the people, what brings the people to the U of A, who come to school and decide to live here, the people at Davis Mountain, who decide to make the city their home, it's the people that made this city, and it's the neighborhoods that made this city. And as long as we value that foundation and moving forward, I think that growth and progression can be a good thing, and coming together is probably the best thing that we can do as a city. Thank you for your time and thank you for consideration.
All right, thank you. Franklin Bennett.
Good evening, councilmembers. I would like to address the ineptitude of your electrical code enforcement department. I'm a journeyman electrician out of California. I've been doing this for 35 years. I witnessed and participated in electrical code violations to where it was at 3,003 West Broadway Mobile Home Park for seniors. It has over a couple hundred residents. If you don't follow codes, you're endangering the welfare of those people at that park. Now, I went to Mr., the supervisor of the electrical code department, Martine Romero. Five times I had to report this to him before they even started an investigation. After the investigation, wanted to have a copy for you, which is the report. Believe it or not, they asked, which is a half-hearted report at very minimal standards. The manager who they stated they spoke to, didn't give a name or anything, they stated they hired an electrician to do repairs. Does all the repairs keep on the park over 151 units? The person they spoke to was Brian Evans. I come to find out in my investigation of this, since I was an ex-law enforcement out of Colorado, he's a convicted felon. Convicted felons in the state of Arizona cannot have an electrical contract license. So while the inspector went there and decided to talk to Mr. Brian, he said he worked for E2 for more than 20 years. This is incorrect. That's the new company he tried to start after he got fired from Aspen Electric, which I worked for as a contract employee through outsourced temporary employment. Mr. Brian says he worked there for more than 20 years. He just started it about a year ago after he got fired for trying to embezzle money from Aspen Electric. So after all these, and I even have Texas stating, and you will see this, that he knew he was doing things against code. And here, when I presented all this evidence to, again, Juan Martine Romero, he decided to throw it out. He didn't want my opinion, didn't want any of this evidence. So I finally spoke to the Deputy Director, Pat Tapia, of Environmental Services, which is his boss. He is now going to start an investigation on this. In all fairness, I didn't give him the chance because by this time and the report that they did of the electrical code department is a joke, ladies and gentlemen. You should be ashamed to have people like this working for you. You should put him and other members of that up in front of you and ask this report, and I'll leave it for you, and ask them why this is the way it is. The persons they asked are the exact criminals who were doing the code violations. And they even stayed on here, yes, we know we have to have permits, but we're not doing major things. I have pictures, I have dates and times, I have a date and timestamp on it, which will prove all of this is correct. This started back in January of 2019.
All right, thank you, sir. If you could hand your documents to the clerk, and she'll get them to the attorney. Appreciate it. Okay, Kay Anderson.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilman. This is, I just have two questions open for anyone. I was at a meeting here in May, and I heard the words TOD thrown around. Where does this idea come from, where we're not gonna have parking lots?
We're not allowed to engage. TOD is transit-oriented development. It's a pretty complex topic that we can spend hours on, the different interests on both sides.
Okay, so I spoke to a lot of citizens of Tucson. Not one of them had any idea about this, one, and not one of them liked the idea either. Has, have the people been asked about this?
I think that there's been a lot of public engagement, and we could, why don't I refer you to a group called Living Streets Alliance to get their perspective.
Living Streets Alliance.
If I may, we can also have Corinne Manning from the Department of Planning and Development Services to contact the speaker today, so that she can explain the concept and the meetings, public meetings that have happened. So let's make sure that we have that information available.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because nobody I spoke to had any idea.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Number two. I've noticed on these that every single thing done in this council is done by declaration of emergency. What is that?
Mr. Rankin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be happy to provide the information to the speaker about the adoption of resolutions and ordinances. An emergency declaration just has the effect of making that action go into effect immediately rather than with a 30-day delay. And actually, we typically only do it on our consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. I just had some questions. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Christine Sayer.
Thank you for letting me address you. Yes, I do live here in Tucson. I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to know what the requirement was from any management rental apartment that is based in HUD, that when there are bedbugs identified, what is the required application for that? Because we've had an issue where I live, and I really would like to know what the requirements are.
Is that Section 8, ma'am?
Yeah, it's HUD, is all I know. It's HUD.
Maybe the same. Mr. Gregory, who is in the back there, in the corner, is in head of that department. You could have a conversation with him.
Okay. And the other question I have is, who do I contact if there's safety issues or health issues that are being ignored, that are not being addressed in a building? Like, for example, we have a situation where the fire alarm was actually, the fire door was actually disarmed by a resident, and he was blocking it open to go in and out to smoke. Nothing is being done about that at all. It was just put off. The other thing is, the same resident is bringing, going up to the streets and gathering garbage, and has been for a year, dragging it into the building, storing it in the building, and it's not considered a health hazard.
And this is at your residence, ma'am?
This is at our residence.
Yeah, Mr. Gregory can answer your questions.
Okay. That's what I always wanted to ask, is who I could talk to about these issues.
He's right there for you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Heidi Miller?
Why does everybody want us to answer their fucking questions?
Thank you. My name is Heidi Miller, and I was here just two weeks ago. And I must know, has my situation been ignored? How can it be that my children and I can live in anxious fear and terror for what is to come? Is it cancer, leukemia, behavioral changes? Certainly immune suppression and depression. Which diseases will they present when their natural rhythms and cellular and mitochondrial electricity is disrupted to the very DNA by 24/7 inescapable exposure to harmful and trespassing technology, all around, everywhere at once? Where will we go now? That my government has opened the door for Verizon, not only to my home and my body and my family unit, but my entire state. A commercial test site for a technology we know to be harmful. What conscious has my government decided to riskily radiate us at such proximity without our consent? How can it be that it takes a simple mother to come here with these busy little people to beg you to do your job protecting the public and not allow commercial enterprises to deface the landscape and poison children? And examine the effects of our existing technologies? How can it be that I stand before my elders and they apparently ignore the science which has remained unsettled since the inception of microwave technology more than 70 years ago? How can it be that nearly 100,000 doctors and scientists' warnings have been disregarded and even considered weightless? How can it be that my leaders sit up there and can sign the execution orders of at least 20 unconsenting families? How can it be that you personally act to allow technology to harm us while we sleep in order to fulfill the wireless addiction over the hill? We want to know that our leaders do their due diligence and that they provide full disclosure regarding the nature of antenna before they seek public input, that they have designed a way to examine whether or not the application has been harmful and why. Why is this not being done? Cell towers have existed in controversial spaces and quantities all around Tucson for as much as a decade or so, so why is it not being examined at all if it's harmful? So if no one truly knows how harmful this can be, then why are you proceeding as if we do? Or that the risk is insignificant if that's not something we know, when there are thousands of published studies and literature suggesting that would be a lie? Just how convoluted is the wireless industry? Just how convoluted is the wireless industry? As soon as you touch your cellphone, you're in violation of the instructions of use which require approximately one-inch distance from the body. That's not just your head, that would be your hands, your belly, your pocket, your feet, your whole self. This mass of microwave terror invading our very privacy will blast my children with frequencies never before tested for harmful effect over duration? Not a single biomedical test to have assured me or you of any safety whatsoever. You were not elected to remain silent. You're elected to speak on my behalf for protection and well-being.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Robert Royce?
Yes, I'm very skeptical about 5G myself. The only way to stop it is by a statewide referendum. There's no other option on that. I did not file my petition on the 29th. I came up 30 signatures short after a very intense three weeks. I got 410 myself, and a young fellow down the street got 15 for me. Probably could have gotten a few more if I'd let him. And some other neighbors that I visit with as I tend my roses got me another seven, so it was 4:32. I was 30 short, really close to 100 short of what I would have really needed to have an unimpeachable petition. I did the best I could. Three out of four people that were qualified to sign, signed. I just miscalculated on the time. It was very hard to find people at home. You can't really work at public places in a small ward like Ward 2 without having half the people either from another ward or from foothills. So I went door to door, and part of the problem was people just weren't home, except like between 4:30 and 6:30. After that, it's dark. And the other problem was, a lot of people wanted to talk to me. I mean, they had issues they wanted to discuss, they wanted my opinions, and I just didn't have it in me to just take their signature and go running away. So if I'd started a week or two earlier, I could have made it on the ballot. There's absolutely a market for what I stand for, pure water and financial responsibility. People like the idea of having a, most people like the idea of having an independent running. I had one Yellow Dog Democrat that was telling me, "I don't believe in anything because I'm not with the party," blah, 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 blah. I tried to reason with him. He clearly doesn't know who I am or what I stand for. And I finally just said, "I don't argue with people, I state my opinions, I listen, but we're beyond that right now, so you have a nice day." I'm proud of the job I did. I didn't ever raise my voice once. I never showed any kind of lack of patience with anyone. And about half the people that signed my petition did it easily, quickly, with very little prompting from me. The other half took some talking, too. And you sort of have to learn by experience who's, how much talking to people need, so you just shut up and let them sign sometimes. Also, there's one demographic group that signed my petition 100% of the time. No African American that was qualified to sign my petition refused to do so, and I found that very encouraging. Thank you very much.
So in the interest of time, we have three folks here for Toxin-Free Pima County. Why don't we have two of the three go? You guys can choose. I've got Ann Lafield, Robin Mozart, and Geraldine Larrington. You guys make your call.
I'm Geraldine Larrington. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and city staff for this opportunity to speak to you. But first, let me thank you for all that you do for this community. Saving water is an important part of sustainability and climate for Tucson and southern Arizona. It's one of the major benefits we are expecting out of the decision by this governing body to adopt an organic-first policy for landscape maintenance. This is sustainability, saving water resources and ultimately financial resources. Thank you for the leadership you have already shown. When Brent Dennis created policy materials for the Organic First Project, he had multiple references to the City of Tucson's General and Sustainable Sustainability 2013 Plan. As our first introduction to the plan, we were impressed by its vision on all the environmental fronts that are of interest to all of us here today. This comprehensive plan was in action as a guiding force for the Organic First Project. It is an amazing document that we can all aspire to continue to put into action. Our group, Toxin-Free Pima County, has more to share on the sustainability and climate fronts to help fulfill the vision of your comprehensive plan. There is a biotechnology industry that you may or may not be aware of in our Tucson business community, which the Organic First Movement has not yet utilized nationally. It has saved 55% in water use in other cities that don't have an organic-first policy. We will share it with Brent Dennis and his team and have them evaluate costs and how it can further enhance our water savings and organic potential. It is another opportunity for Tucson to be perceived as a leader, not only in the state, but for the whole Organic First Movement. The reason we mention it to this body today is because it also has application to water treatment and to our solid waste management practices. This biological approach eats up waste, so we would not have stench from the water treatment plant along I-10. In landfill application, it eats up organic matter which can compact its size and help reduce or prevent contaminants leaching into groundwater. It also reduces and does not allow methane gas to develop, which requires expensive installation and maintenance of gas burn-off systems. And finally, used in the water trucks that manage dust that can control odor at the landfill as well. Its use can go a long ways in helping with sustainability and even factors influencing climate on a small scale. It is another biotechnology change opportunity. Its effectiveness has been demonstrated to city or county departments in charge of these tasks, but change is hard to initiate at the departmental level. This is another situation that requires leadership and vision from the top. If this council would like more information about another way in which to apply your General and Sustainability 2013 Plan for dramatic change in these community service industries of water and solid waste, our group will be happy to connect you to this resource. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Either Ann or Robin.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Robin Mozart in the foothills, and I'm here to encourage the city council to address the southwest as the most vulnerable in our nation, and we're in an emergency and must act now. And I support the city's goals and policies as stated in the Natural Environment Plan from 2013. And I'm asking you to please step up your plan in the 2030 district goals to reduce the energy and water with new strength and engagement. I'm supporting the city's plans through different volunteer groups, Non-toxic Pima County, Sustainable Tucson, and the Center for Biological Diversity, and in public outreach and education. Solutions can be found to these climate issues in drawdown.org and pachamama.org. There are a lot of great organizations in this city that are working hard to make this a better place, and the city of Berkeley is introducing a new program to organize these volunteer groups, and I just wondered maybe if that was something the city might be interested in. Thank you for strengthening your plans in the green infrastructure and with conscious connection between land use, planning, water resources, and infrastructure planning. Please adhere to the health concerns of 5G. The young lady just spoke about that. And please strengthen the protections of the ozone, and the number-one climate change is refrigerants. So since we live in the desert and the heat is increasing, and so are the population, I'm just wondering what we can do about that. These are hard problems. And thank you for reducing waste and working on the different programs for recycle. And thank you for increasing incentives to homeowners and businesses for solar and supporting businesses in education and finding alternatives. Lastly, please protect wildlife, who all have a purpose and a job to do in our ecosystems and habitats, the monarch butterflies, the bees, the other wildlife. Bees, we have the most, we have the largest population of bees in the world here in Tucson, and we all know that bees are important to food production, and we all know that Tucson is a UNESCO World Heritage Site. So there's lots to protect here. I'm really proud to be a citizen of Tucson, and thank you very much for all that you do.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to move on to the little I-11 discussion. I've got five cards. We'll take three. Three of the cards are people who we hear from quite regularly, Kevin, Carolyn, and Christina. So I'm thinking I'd like to hear from a couple of people we don't hear from as regularly, Diane and Lee, and then we'll let the three others choose who they want to have close it. So let's go with Diana Call.
Hi, I'm Diane Call. I live in Alver Valley. I'm a resident Marana. And apparently, I missed your study session. I came early, at 12, actually, and didn't happen until later. But I heard that you're very well-informed, so appreciative, really thank you deeply, because it's been quite a sacrifice to choose to live a rural lifestyle. So to think that all our efforts out there, not just me, but I stood on the streets, handed out flyers, talked to a lot of people, it's a big sacrifice for a lot of people to live that way, so to have it turned into a development area. Also, I just want to throw in, since I don't need to say much, because apparently you get it, is that it would be great if Tucson, if this community could make that area a banner area for how we could develop in a different way, one that really, you know, meets the needs of what's been expressed. We could be visionary about it. So again, I just really wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lee Ezus?
Thank you, Mayor Rothschild and council members. I'm speaking to you all in support of the resolution which would have the city oppose Interstate 11. The idea of a mid-century solution would work better, as we are about to enter the third decade of the 21st century, is nonsense. This bypassing highway is an economic disaster, and you need to look no further than the Central Valley of California. In 1963, Interstate 5 began construction, completed in 1979. When you go to Reelordwich and you go to the east side, you go up a freeway that takes into account the cities and towns of the vast agricultural area that is the Central Valley. But if you go up the west side, you go up a bypass, a highway that was built specifically to take people from Los Angeles and the southern areas of the state functionally to San Francisco. There are gas stations there and chain restaurants, which means low-paying service jobs. And where is the concentration of poverty and economic problems in the state of California? In the cities and towns on the east side, on the east side of the Central Valley. Similarly, this particular highway, Interstate 11, bypasses our cities and towns in favor of an area where there literally is no development at all. I don't see how it could be any different. I'm just picking a more obvious example that happens to be next door, but this isn't the only one. There could be many more. On that famous list where Tucson comes in fifth as the poorest urban, large urban city in America, well, Fresno happens to be seventh. Merced and Modesto have high rates of poverty. And do I need to speak of Stockton, which actually was the largest city bankruptcy in U.S. history until Detroit went bankrupt? I think the definition of insanity is doing the same thing repeatedly and expecting a different result. A highway bypassing already in-place settlements, cities and towns, industry homes, and parks and every other thing that we love here in Tucson and our way up to Phoenix is just that, insane. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council, thank you, the audience.
Thank you. Kevin, you're seizing the podium.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of my friends, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was an impressive show of concern and intelligent questions, and we were blown away. Thank you. You know our opinion, you've read mine in the Sunday paper. It was not surprising to me that the representative from the Arizona Department of Transportation wouldn't answer your questions, because when he tried to answer one, he was incapable. There are nine cooperating federal agencies. None of them have to consent to this because it's the decision of the Federal Highway Administration solely. The State Department of Transportation is the local sponsor, paying for this study that's gone on for four years. They allocated $15 million of highway funds that could have gone to other Arizona state highway projects that would have benefited us, just to do half of the environmental compliance for this segment. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we've got two more on the same topic. We heard from Barbara earlier. We'll either Mark Kissinger or Josephine Wilson on heat awareness and heat planning.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Kissinger. I'm a second-year student in the Master of Public Health Program at the University of Arizona and a lifelong Tucson resident. The current focus of research I'm going to be involved in and where I want to go with my career is the implications of extreme heat conditions on the health of our people, animals, and environment, and how these domains all interact with each other. Several weeks ago, we saw a decent-sized local power equipment failure that covered an area that included several major restaurants, small businesses, and just narrowly missed my apartment complex and the neighboring residential areas. The outage didn't last long, but these aren't always going to be that easy to fix, and the city of Tucson and surrounding areas need to be prepared for extreme heat and the risk of electrical grid failures at different scales. If you operate a restaurant, no matter if it's a chain franchise or a hole in the wall, can you afford to throw out your entire inventory and replace it and keep your business operational during the time it takes to do that? Can you do that if you're a family using food assistance programs? If you have young children or pets in your home, can you make sure they're safe without air conditioning during peak summer temperatures? If you're an older adult experiencing homelessness or undocumented, do you have somewhere safe to go where you can avoid extreme heat? The city of Tucson needs to treat extreme heat with the same gravity as we would any other kind of emergency or disaster planning. Existing state resources, data about extreme heat, and scientific and professional publications focus heavily on Maricopa County and the metropolitan, and the Phoenix metro area. Tucson is a growing city with vulnerable people, and we need to make sure we're prepared. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that'll be it for Call the Audience tonight. Thank you all for coming in and expressing yourselves so articulately. It's appreciated. Let's move on to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through N.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for the Grant Road, Union Pacific Railroad underpass project. Item C is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with Pima County for the Five Points Neighborhood and Business Coalition Investment Project, reinvestment project. Item D is license agreements approving a uniform video service license agreement and a standard form of application and affidavit for uniform license agreement, and authorizing the Transportation Department Director to execute such license agreements. Your Honor, there was a correction to the ordinance. The ordinance delivered was listed as ordinance number 23051. It's been corrected to read ordinance 11661.
That's item D?
On item D, Your Honor. Item E is real property acquisition of right-of-way for a bus pullout near Stone Avenue and Glen Street. Item F is real property vacation and transfer of surplus city property of the former Hughes Access Road for Air Force Plant 44. Item G is an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Marana for use of the Southern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Center. Item H is an intergovernmental agreements with Pima County for the purpose of participating in the federally funded home program. Item I is a final plat S-19005 Chalome subdivision, lots 1 through 12, and common area A. Item J is a final plat S-18098, tres pueblos este, lots 1, block 1, lots 1 through 103, lots 104 through 156, and common areas A1 through A4 and B1 through B2. Item K is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the native vegetation for public landscaping. Item L is a labor agreement extension with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Item- Item M is Tucson Code Amendment Chapter 10 Fiscal Year 2020 Compensation Plan Schedules. This item was continued from the meeting of June 4, 2019. There is also a correction to this item on the Attachment Classification Addendum, the date on that addendum is changed to April 17, 2019. Also, Class Code 6377 Professional Staff Commander Assignment Assistant Chief Grade 819 has been added as a new classification. Item N is a Lease Agreement with Renovalo Multipurpose Facilities District for the Tucson Convention Center. Item O is a Resolution Opposing the Proposed Alignment of Interstate 11. That's the extent of the Consent Agenda, Your Honor.
May I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, I'd like to move the items on the Consent Agenda.
Got a motion and a second to approve the items on the Consent Agenda. Any discussion on any of those items? Hearing done, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbers?
Aye.
Items on the Consent Agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Let's move on to Item 8.
Public Hearing, Application by Turf Paradise for an Off-Track Paramutual Wagering Site at Midtown Tavern, 3620 North First Avenue. This item is continued from the meeting of June 4, 2019. Report from City Manager, Resolution Number 23008.
City Manager's Communication Number 216, dated June 18, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request for a new paramutual wagering license for off-track bedding located at Midtown Tavern, 3620 North First Avenue. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, address, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are paid speaker. We have three cards, so shouldn't be hard to get through them. We will start with Jay Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen and women. My name is Jay Wells, and I'm president of the Rito Park Foundation, the Rito Racetrack, and Arlen Farmers Market. We're a 501(c)(3) that has been built to try to make a public-private partnership with Pima County for the betterment of Rito Park. We do believe that if the government pools its assets with nonprofit dollars, that the public can actually have a benefit from that, instead of the burden of the taxpayer. One of the things that has trapped us in our plan was that the racetrack is clearly our economic engine, and one of the main things that has happened is in the inception of off-track betting in Pima County back in the early '90s, the Dog Track basically had 100% monopoly of all of the parlors in Pima County. We received a small commission, roughly based about 10% of the takeout commission that went to Rito Park, but the rest was distributed between Turf Paradise and the Dog Track, and the Dog Track did operate those parlors. In the effort to outlaw dog racing in 2016, which was successful, one of the collateral damages was to Rito Park, because we lost our right to that commission. We have been debating, arguing, negotiating, pleading, and doing just about everything that we could to find a way for Rito Park to have an avenue to generate revenue that every racetrack in the country benefits from, with the exception of Rito Park, until now. We went through the legislative process, I think everyone is well aware that Bill 2547 was signed by the governor. They say that it's like, legislation's like watching the sausage being baited, it is, but we were successful, the sausage is good. You know, I want to stop right now and basically say I want to thank Frank for your patience in this, because you were kind of caught up in a much bigger negotiation that went on at the state level, and so thank you and welcome to the off-track betting family. The Memorandum of Understanding that we have with Turf Paradise allows Rito Park to have six independently operated OTB parlors within Pima County. It also limits the amount of parlors that can be done through the, with the combination of Turf Paradise and that to seven. Currently, there's five operated by the Dog Track, Turf Paradise has agreed to only open up two. We have an agreement, and part of the agreement is that there has to be 1.25 miles between one another, so that we don't infringe on the territory, and I think the biggest thing that's the difference is competition is good, and this is going to give us a chance to bring the parlors up to a larger level, generate a bigger handle, and generate more local dollars. One of the things that I'm particularly proud of is that Rito Park has partnered with the University of Arizona in an equine wellness program, and I think everyone is aware in the national media, the issues with horse fatalities, and this was a project that we actually started last summer. I am very, very proud to say that we did have, we did have five accidents last year. This year, we had zero. We had students watching the horses train, we had vets taking care of the horses every day, monitoring them, and so we believe that Rito's efforts represents a prototype. I won't say that we're a leader, but we can show the leaders the way to do things in cooperation with the University of Arizona. I'd like to address you, Councilman Kazachik, because I know you've got concerns of this, but in a conversation that we've had, you one time said you wouldn't let the perfect get in the way of the good, and we think this opportunity for Rito and Turf Paradise to work together gives us a chance to have an impact on the industry, not just regionally and locally, but nationally. We are very grateful to the patience that everyone in this negotiation showed, we are very grateful to you for standing behind Rito and giving us an opportunity to take a portion of the stage. We think that this will make a huge difference in our local economy, Rito Park, the funds that will be generated as a 501(c)(3) will allow us to offer horsemen's prizes, better equine wellness, spruce up the place, increase the farmers' market, we're talking about doing a food hub in the track facility, so that there's a place for the farmers to keep their food year-round, and I also want to take this time to thank, thank you to Dave Anderson, who is here, Dave Johnson, who is here from Turf Paradise. The negotiations with Turf Paradise were arduous, difficult at times, but we stuck at it, and we do believe that this outcome is in the best interest of not only the horsemen and those that have interests, but in the Rito Park and in the citizens of Tucson, city of Tucson and Pima County. At that time, I'd like, in my comments, are there any questions?
Nope, that's your time to speak. Karen Zoldan?
My name's Karen Zoldan, and I live at 4438 East Poe Street, and the dark glasses, I just had my eyes dilated this morning, this afternoon. On February 4, 2019, the Arizona Republic newspaper in Phoenix wrote a lengthy article with the title, "Arizona Racehorses Are Dying at a Record Rate: The Question Is Why." The article is referring to turf, I'm not going to say paradise, because in my opinion, it's an oxymoron. The article said, "So far this season, there had already been 22 catastrophic injuries," which is on pace for another record year, and this is according to the Arizona Department of Gaming Records. The season, for your information, in question started October 13, 2018. It runs seven days a week, has approximately 10 races a day, and runs a race every 30 minutes. On the blog, Horse Racing Wrongs, they did a Freedom of Information Act request from the same Department of Racing, Gaming. I was going to read you all the horses' names and how they died, but that would far exceed my five minutes. So in 2018, and this is from January through December, at turf, 42 horses died caused by racing, with the first horse dying January 10. Mercifully, racing stops, horse racing stops the first Sunday in May and resumed October 13, and went to year-end. At Rito, four horses died, but the gentleman just said five were injured, so, during their short racing period of weekends from February 10 to March 18, and at the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds, one died over one weekend of racing. So I'm just going to read you a few things that happened at turf. Two horses died on the same day, January 14. Less than a month later, on February 10, two horses died on the same day. A horse that was not named broke both front legs and neck. And again, less than a month later, on March 3, two more horses died on the same day. On April 29, two horses died, Fighter Gone Wild and Mr. Dynasty. The latter suffered a head trauma with fractured skull and brain bleed. Racing started up again on October 13, and the next day, Just Pure Class broke both front legs. On November 17, two more horses died, and on October 12, Unusual Champ collapsed from a pulmonary hemorrhage. Also, on April 5 and May 6, two horses died of pneumonia. While they were not racing at the time, their deaths happened at turf, as well as April 6, where a horse suffered a colon displacement. The issue here is not about being business-friendly. Horses are majestic animals. Horse racing is animal cruelty disguised as entertainment. So my question to you, the council, is, do you need to give greed a helping hand by supporting this inhumane travesty? Thank you.
Gary Vella?
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name's Gary Vella, I live at 5329 South Morning Sky Lane in the beautiful community of Savannah. We were one of the early families to move in there about 17 years ago, and I would like to address this issue on behalf of SPEAK, which is an animal protection organization here in Tucson. We work on many issues, and it's our job to stay on top of these issues, for the sake of the animals. I'm glad that some of the points have been brought out tonight. The industry itself is fundamentally flawed, it's very reflective of the greyhound industry. You can't take something that's fundamentally flawed and make it good. The problem is that beneath its glamorous facade, commercial horse racing is a ruthless industry motivated by financial gain and prestige. What is concealed from the public is the unremitting challenges the racehorse is forced to endure, often in its very short life, which is usually about three years in the industry. The suffering starts at a very early age, at approximately six months. The foal is separated from its mother and the training for racing begins. The average racehorse will race for less than three years before being discarded. These are some of the things you won't hear in the headlines, I mean, Santa Anita is been all over the media, and we know the problems there, and the increased scrutiny on the industry, as in many other animal exploitative industries, is bringing the problem forward like it's never been seen before, despite some of the drugs that are introduced to mask the problems. The training to the foal, it'll be broken, meaning it'll be taught to comply with human commands through learned helplessness techniques, which compels the horse to obey due to fear, pain, or both. The horses that rebel against the oppressive training methods will be forced even more harshly into compliance. If they fail to comply, they will be deemed rogue horses and discarded. Now, the mother, often called the brood mare, that's the industry terminology, she will be pregnant for more than 90% of her life while she's involved in the industry, if you can imagine that. Brood mares are mostly discarded once their stud days are over. Now, in preparation for its first race, the yearling will commence a training regime which will place enormous stress on the immature skeletal frame and make it prone to early breakdown. This causes many lower limb ailments and injuries, including fractures, pulled ligaments, and strained tendons. Many horses suffer injuries well before their first race. As running at high speeds over long distances is not natural to horses, many show resistance to conventional training methods. As a result, pain and fear are used to force the horse into submission. Various devices and methods, some legal and some illegal, will give the horse no option but to comply to the demands of the trainer. In the time I have left, I want to go into some of the medical situations that the horses deal with due to their involvement in the racing industry. Bleeding of the lungs, or EIPH, which is an acronym for Exercise-Induced Pulmonary This condition is, it has a high prevalence in racing thoroughbreds. Horses with EIPH bleed into the lungs and airways, usually as a result of burst capillaries. The tiny blood vessels are ruptured by the sheer pressure of blood pumping around the body during strenuous exercise. Researchers at the University of Melbourne have shown that 56% of racehorses have blood in their windpipe, and 90% have blood deeper in their lungs. Only about 1% of horses show outward signs of bleeding with blood at the nose. The rest are more difficult to diagnose, because they bleed into their lungs without it being obvious. A study in the Equine Veterinary Journal found hemorrhaging in the lungs in 95% of horses checked during two post-race examinations. An article in the same journal states that hemorrhaging in the lungs is a condition affecting virtually all horses during intense exercise worldwide.
Okay, Gary.
There's no treatment considered a solution at this point.
All right, thank you, sir.
I hope that brings our awareness on the issue in general.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, those are all the cards we have. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23008 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23008, relating to Off-Track Betting Facilities, approving Midtown Tavern, 3620 North First Avenue, Tucson, Arizona, as an off-track, off-track paramutual betting site for horse racing and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
I hope we approve the, I move we approve the resolution, the motion, and approve the, approve the application of Midtown Tavern.
Okay, we have a second? Is there a second? Not here in a second. Councilmember Durham?
First off, I'd like to thank the applicant, Frank Silverman, for his patience. I think it's important to remember that Frank came to us last year for an OTB application that would have permitted both horse and dog racing signals. I told him, joined by my colleagues on the council, that dog racing was not something this council should support or will support, and that I would vote against the proposal. In my vote against the dog racing, I asked him to come back with a horse-only application, that is exactly what he has done. I would like to thank also my colleagues on the council for their patience with this item. When Frank first came forward with his application for Turf Paradise, I was approached by Tucson's Rito Racetrack. They were actively negotiating with Turf Paradise to ensure that they could stay financially viable and ensure that some of the money wagered in Tucson stayed in Tucson, instead of going to Maricopa County. After continuing the item, we worked with our governmental team to let our legislative delegation know about HB 2547. HB 2547 gave Rito more flexibility to compete on an even playing field with Turf Paradise to open up their own off-track betting sites. By continuing the item, we helped bring the parties to the table to get this bill passed and signed into law, and the MOU between Rito and Turf Paradise, we all received copies of this afternoon. Rito Racetrack is operated as a not-for-profit foundation Rito Racetrack is operated as a not-for-profit foundation, preserving the history of horse racing since 1943 on publicly-owned land. As I'm sure you all know, it also houses a farmer market, a farmer's market, soccer fields, and event space. Ensuring the economic viability of the racetrack is important to the region. I'd also like to say that Rito had an excellent partnership with the U of A's College of Agriculture this past season that helped connect animal science students with horsemen and their horses to prevent racing injuries. With the U of A's proposed School of Veterinary Sciences, there will be, there will soon be even more opportunities for engagement. By approving Turf Paradise and Midtown Tavern's application today, we will be ensuring the viability of Rito Racetrack reaffirming our opposition to dog racing and supporting a longstanding local business owner bringing sales tax to the city. That's why I will be voting yes if we get a second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozachek.
So we've heard Karen Zoldan spoke of Turf's record, thank you, and some about Rito's own history of fatalities and injuries. When I reached out to Rito several weeks ago to ask whether or not they would join what at the time was Santa Anita's agreement to ban the use of drugs on the race day, the answer was no. And in fact, Santa Anita backpedaled from their original agreement to ban the use of drugs, and now they're phasing it in over a period of four years, I believe it is. With respect to the equine program, the U of A Veterinary College isn't even accredited and so, or fully funded. And so, any agreement or any hope that you have to up the ante in terms of the involvement of U of A Veterinary School is trusting our state legislature to accredit the school and then fully fund it. There are five OTB parlors in Tucson right now, plus Tucson Greyhound Park. Greyhound racing will still be on screens, even those against state law do live racing in this state. Today is not about being business friendly. It is about whether or not we want to enable the proliferation of an industry that is mired in controversy over treating animals as expendable commodities. And this is not new. I pulled up a 2008 AP report, and I'll just quote a paragraph. Thoroughbred racetracks in the U.S. reported more than three horse deaths per day last year and 5,000 since 2003. The vast majority were put down after suffering devastating injuries on the track. Countless other deaths went unreported because of lax record-keeping, the AP found in its broadest report to date. In addition to that, available reports at the time indicated that for every 1,000 thoroughbreds who die on the racetrack, approximately 10,000 are sent to slaughter for human consumption The last time this was on the agenda, there had been 23 deaths at Santa Anita. Now they're up to 26. That's since Christmas of last year. Churchill Downs during the Kentucky Derby escaped a major tragedy where a couple of horses bumped. And the reaction from one of the spokesmen, and frankly, Jay, it mimicked what you said, is that this would be in the best interests of horsemen. The reaction of the guy at Churchill Downs was that had that horse fallen and there's another 14 horses or so behind him, you could have seen a pileup, which would have been god-awful for business, the game, and the fans, without a single mention of the horses and the tragedy that they would have suffered. They ran in the muck and there was not a single mention of the horses' lives that were ultimately at risk on that day. A couple of weeks after that, when the Preakness ran, one of the horses bucked the rider off at the starting gate. These horses are not, these animals are not doing this as a career choice. Throughout most of the rest of the racing world, especially in Europe, it has long been forbidden to give a horse any medication whatsoever on the day of the race. That means no painkillers so that the horse can, so that the horse can race. Until the 1950s in the United States, a trainer couldn't even give a horse an aspirin. Now, today, almost every horse that goes to post has been given Lasix or another enhancement, usually called butazolol. And the result is that most of our injuries are the result of racing infirm or overworked horses. If we implemented the European standards domestically, you'd see about a third of the horse races not being, not being at post and therefore eliminating, eliminating horse racing as we know it in this, in this country. This is all about money. It's all about setting up book joints in anticipation of sports gambling being legalized. They will continue, and they do continue, to stream dog races, even though it's illegal in the state of Arizona. And I will not be supporting enabling the exploitation of these animals by expanding parlor bedding in this city.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Cunningham?
This is a pretty complex issue. I didn't, I gave this thought on the fact that I've known some horse owners who've raised thoroughbreds, and they, I've always thought that they've taken pride in their horses. That was my anecdotal understanding of the sport. I did some research based on some of the comments we received, and I found that this past year in particular, there's been quite an increase nationally with horse deaths related to the industry. Several things are in play. One is a universal banning of Lasix nationwide. Another piece is a phase in in several, in several tracks, including Santa Anita, Churchill Downs, and Rito, which would prohibit same-day racing. I'm not sure whether or not that will yield huge results. I will say this, the Rito Racetrack in Tucson has a good tradition. I used to go with my grandma three times a month. And I don't, I think it's something that is special and unique to us. We have a good horse culture here in Tucson. When I was a kid, going to the east side, we had a full complement of horse ranches. And I don't know if I want to pull the plug on that today. I will say that I encourage the city, if we, if this does pass, I'd encourage the city to take a look at some, some of the things that we can do by ordinance to ensure that Rito's working in the best interests of its horses. Having met several owners and trainers here in Tucson over the years, I can't, I haven't met one that's all about business. You don't make a whole bunch of money racing horses in Tucson, Arizona. The claim races, all that stuff is, it's just not that much money. This is about basically them celebrating their animals to some degree. So I don't know, I will say that the risks and the fact that there are so many deaths nationwide, I have a problem with. But at the same time, I don't want to be in a situation where the city of Tucson, our community, and Rito are cut out of this opportunity that the state's put forward. So I'm going to support the motion, but I will say that I'm open to a further discussion about what we can do as far as, you know, putting some regulations on what Rito's doing to ensure the safety of their animals.
All right, anybody else? If not, let's go to roll call.
I'm going to respond to that. I want to put in context before we vote on this, that those, the fatality and injury records for Rito that were referenced are based on 12 live racing days a year, not what we're seeing up in, up at turf where it's what, 120 or 140 or something like that. I mean, so we're, if you extrapolate those out, 12 to 140, those numbers are going to be pretty astronomical. I'm not looking at this as cutting ourselves out of an opportunity. I'm looking at this as an opportunity for us to make a statement about an industry that's out of control right now and in which the animals are being maimed and killed.
Okay, anything else? If not, let's go to roll call.
I have a question.
Councilmember Romero?
If the city attorney can explain to us what exactly is it that we have in front of us today?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Romero. This is seeking the mayor and council's approval for the application for an off-track wagering site at the Midtown Tavern. Under the state process, under the statutes, before an application can be granted by the Department of Gaming and Division of Racing, it requires the approval of the local jurisdiction, in this case, the city of Tucson.
So this is for, for an approval relating to an off-track bedding facility here in the city of Tucson?
That's correct.
Who, which, either it's state or county or city jurisdiction has control over the quality or the control of the horses that are, that are entered into races?
Any of those types of issues, we do not have authority at the local level to govern and are addressed through the Department of Gaming at the state.
So it's a state issue? So it would, we would have to go to the state of Arizona to institute humane policies in terms of the treatment of these horses? If we would like to see, as stated, better treatment, less usage of drugs or painkillers the day of the event, those issues of treatment of horses are regulated by the state?
That's my understanding, yes, council.
How can the city of Tucson enter?
I think the only thing.
Input.
Jay, hop on up for a second. You had mentioned that a part of the revenue that will be gained, assuming we allow this license, is going to go to support the agreement you've made with the U of A school that you've just started and apparently saw some real results from last year.
That's correct. It doesn't just deal with the health.
Well, what percentage of that money is going to go?
Well, we have not determined that quite yet. We haven't made a dime off of any parlors yet, so it'll take us a little while to see how it matters. But I will say, if I may take this opportunity, some of the statistics were old, and I did illustrate in my earlier comments that we went from five deaths, and there was one that was done as a training accident that was not reported because it wasn't a race accident. But we're clear about that. And, you know, I will speak personally, when I got involved in this business, I'm not a horseman. I've never owned a racehorse in my life. And the first day that I had to actually go and witness, for insurance reasons, the horse being put down, I had to ask myself, what am I doing? And, you know, when I saw the trainers crying over their horse, and I realized, you know, we got an opportunity to do something here. And so this equine wellness program was generated before any of this national commentary about sanity and all that. And there are problems in the industry. But the best way to address the problems isn't to literally get rid of something that has centuries of tradition. Do we recognize that the sport does need attention? Yes, but to ban medications like saying that a football player or a high school football player can't take ibuprofen. So there are some extremes, and I think today this has been presented in a black-and-white issue, and like anything, it's not. I am very, very proud of the steps that we took in our equine wellness program. Rito is the first place that ever introduced the photo finish camera. We are the birthplace of quarter-horse racing. We are a small track, and that gives us the flexibility. And as a 501(c)(3), we have a charge to take this opportunity and demonstrate to the world that something can be done in a positive steps. Forgive my emotion, because it is an emotional issue. I challenge myself about it every day. But I don't believe that, as I said, letting the perfect get in the way of the good. Here we have an opportunity with the U of A's of that school to literally take some steps where at one day, there might be a situation where these statistics aren't even remembered, that we do, we'll look after the horses. I do know that those trainers and those owners back there love their horses. As I said, I'm not a horse owner. I'm a preservation architect who got in to try to save a historic structure. And the next thing I know, I'm in the horse racing business. But I do know that some of the statistics that were counted today, including the article about Turf Paradise, and I would invite you and implore you to ask on Dave to come up, these statistics, we took action. We did safety causes. Those, the statistics have plummeted. We reacted to the problem as an industry. You are seeing an industry go through a self-examination that.
Jay, let me ask you, let me ask you one question. Are you intending to continue the U of A wellness program?
Absolutely. It is our, it is our, it's my baby. I'll say that.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, what we have in front of us is relating to off-track bedding facilities. But I think that the issues brought here today from Councilmember Kozachek are legitimate. But the city of Tucson doesn't have those issues in front of us today. Today, we have this particular off-site bedding facility. I think that it would be appropriate to work with Rito and with the U of A to make sure that if there is a position that the city of Tucson should take a stance on in terms of the treatment of these horses, and their riders, by the way, that we do that with the work and an input of all stakeholders.
I think that's right. Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
You still want to go again, no?
Yeah, you called Jay up. I may have Karen come up and talk about the industry's position in front of the Department of Gaming when it comes to the position, issue of banning drugs on race day. Have you heard their testimonies?
Karen, could you come up for a second?
Or Gary, either one. The industry has been very clear when they go in front of the Department of Gaming, and it is our issue today because we're voting on whether or not we want to enable the continuation of this industry. And they have taken a very firm position in front of the Department of Gaming, I mean, with respect to administration of drugs on race day.
Karen, I think Steve can ask a question. I think the question is, are you aware of what the Department of Racing?
Know what the industry's position is when testifying in front of the Department of Gaming.
With regard to drugs on race day?
I'm not, I'm not aware of it, no.
Gary, have you heard him? Because I am, and I was trying, since you called Jay up, I was asking, going to ask someone else to come up and speak too.
Well, there's, what's going on right now? Since the industry basically has its back against the wall at this point in light of recent circumstances over several months, going even further back, actually, they are now looking at, you know, the drug situation. It wasn't challenged before because it was just standard in the industry, but now it's coming out into limelight. And now the, and especially with the pressure from some of the national animal protection groups such as PETA, they're trying to, you know, have some wiggle room there where, you know, okay, we're going to address these drugs, you know, we're going to like, look at this one and consider if this should still be used or, you know, there's such a cocktail of drugs that have been used in this industry, just as standard practice, that there are a lot of different items to look at. But, you know, I think there's some flexibility for the first time in the industry to say, okay, we get it, and we know we need to change.
So here's the reality, though, thank you, Gary, is that when they, when Santa Anita was called on it, and the ownership of Santa Anita, when they only had 23 and not 26 deaths, agreed to ban the use of enhancements and medications on race day. It was the trainers, it was the industry, it was the horsemen who came to them and said, no, you can't do that. You got to phase this in over time because we're used to, we're used to using these drugs and the result being injuries and deaths as a result of running infirm and over-raced horses. And so the industry could absolutely self-impose, Rito could absolutely self-impose, it doesn't take the state, but the answer was no, we're not going to do it.
They didn't do that because of that. They did that because they didn't have an infrastructure for drug testing and all the other enforcement issues, and they were, where people were going to cheat right away. We're talking about two different, we're beating to death an issue that is a problem nationally.
One at a time.
But we're supposed to be voting on a guy who's, who's got a bar, is trying to have a, have a, have a license.
Let Steve finish.
What we're voting on is whether or not we, as a governing body, want to enable the support of this industry. support of this industry in the face of multiple deaths nationwide in an industry that's taken a strong look at itself as to whether or not it should self-impose sanctions. It's not doing it. Rito's not going to do it. It's not about Midtown Tavern, it's about the industry. We took the same position when we came out very forcefully against Greyhound Racing, and we should have been proud of that. We should take the same position here tonight.
Okay, all right, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham? Aye. Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
All right, that motion, Resolution 23008, passes by a vote of 6-1. Let's go to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to kind of finalize the conversation, is there a possibility of getting maybe the position of Councilmember Kozaczek presented to us so that we, if there is any advocacy that the city of Tucson can do with the state, that we at least have a discussion, an informed discussion, to be able to push on that?
Yeah, I think the first place to start, because I think we act locally, is with the University of Arizona and Rito, and we can, on our own, keep an eye and certainly work with the U of A and, you know, work to assure that we're getting better results. Councilmember Durham?
We can make the Rito Racetrack and in their partnership with the U of A's College of Agriculture, a strong statement in favor of humane treatment of the horses. And the other thing is, the state law governs treatment of horses, and that's not what we're voting on today.
And I might suggest that there'll probably likely be some of these in front of us again, and Rito's record can be reviewed, and if, it sounds like you had a good year last year, it sounds like you didn't have such a good year the year before, but we can certainly take that into account on any individual license, so. All right, let's move on to item nine.
Zoning C-91821, Surf Through Incorporated, Old Vale Road, C-1 and I-2 to I-2. City managers report, report from city manager, report from zoning examiner.
City manager's communication number 210, date June 18, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.38 acres from C-1 and I-1 to I-2 zoning. The rezoning site is located in the interior of Houghton Town Center, south of Old Vale Road, and west of Houghton Road. Staff recommends authorization of I-2 zoning, subject to certain conditions. The zoning examiner recommends approval of I-2 zoning. Is the applicant or representative present on this matter? Anybody here? Nope. Okay. Mr. Clark, maybe you can help us with this one? Have you had conversations with the applicant?
The applicant, one, there are no conditions on this one.
Oh.
And the applicant was agreeable to the entire process, and this is a simple cleaning up of, we had a mixed zoning of I-1 and C-2 together. This pulls an I-2 line across the entire site, makes it consistent.
Got it, all right. What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we authorize the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner.
Second.
We've got a motion and second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Let's move to item 10.
Finance fixing and levying the primary and secondary property taxes for fiscal year 2020, report from city manager, ordinance number 11655.
City manager's communication number 213, date June 18, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance 11655 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11655, relating to taxation, fixing, levying, and assessing primary and secondary property taxes for the city of Tucson. Upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Tucson, subject to taxation, each in a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amounts estimated to be received from other sources of revenue and unencumbered balances from the previous fiscal year, providing funds for various purposes, all for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mayor, before I make the motion, I wanted, for the record, could the mayor and council be reminded on how the proposed primary and secondary tax rate would be lower for fiscal year 20 than it was in fiscal year 19? Joyce?
Councilmember Fimbres, mayor, members of the council, both the primary and the secondary property taxes are decreasing. The primary property tax is decreasing because of the involuntary tort portion of the property tax. For fiscal year 19, we had a reimbursement of $2.5 million, and that is decreasing for fiscal year 20 to over $200,000. So, that's why the primary property tax is decreasing. The secondary property tax is decreasing because we actually have some dollars on reserve, and we have to use that reserve to lower the tax rate. We're not able to hold on to reserves, so that's why the secondary is going down.
Okay, thank you. And on that, I pass, I move to pass and adopt ordinance 11655.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on that matter?
Yes, your honor. I just want to make sure that everyone knows, we've done all this stuff, all right? We passed some bonds, we've fixed a number of things, and this year, for every $100,000 your home is worth, your actual assessment's going down 95 bucks. We're actually lowering property taxes. And I know it's not a headline-grabber because, you know, over a year, that's $8 a month, maybe nine, but it's a big deal, and it's a testament to how well this city's run by the staff. I mean, we like to take credit for it, but this is a function of the efficiency of the city manager and his team, so well done.
Okay, we, any other discussion? Hearing done, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes 7-0. Item 11.
Economic Development, approving a time extension of the downtown financial incentive district report from city manager, resolution 23050.
City manager's communication number 214, date June 18, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution 23050 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23050, relating to economic initiatives, approving and authorizing an extension of the downtown financial incentive district and declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure?
I'd move that we approve the one-year extension.
Second.
Okay, movement, motion is to pass and adopt resolution 23050. Any other discussion? Hearing done, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Resolution 23050 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 12.
Economic Development, authorizing Rio Nuevo multipurpose facilities district to provide government property lease excise tax abatement for 35 East Tool Avenue, report from city manager, resolution number 23052.
City manager's communication number 219, date June 18, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution 23052 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23052, relating to economic development incentives in Rio Nuevo multipurpose facilities district, approving an eight-year tax abatement to be included in the government property lease excise tax lease agreement between Rio Nuevo and Tool Avenue Partners III LLC for the redevelopment project at 35 East Tool Avenue.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I met during the break with Mike Tukowski and Carrie and went through the report, the chart that makes it appear that the value, that the benefits equal the cost is really inaccurate. You have to go back into the charts and some of the supporting material later in the report that really shows it's about a half a million dollar delta in favor of the incentive, and so I'm going to move that we adopt the G plot, the E or G plot.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any other discussion on this matter? Hearing done, let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Resolution 23, that vote was what was keeping us from going on. Resolution 23052 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 13.
Adjournment?
Council stand adjourned, next meeting Tuesday, July 19, same time. Thank you.[1760.78]